All right. The time is 6:48 PM. I'm sorry, officer. Go for it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before we begin this meeting, I ask that everybody silence your cell phones, please. Thank you. Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees meetings an open meeting for the public to observe the board conducting district business. Therefore, audience members may address the board during the designated audience item section on the agenda. If you have any printed materials you want to give to the board members, you must provide them to the Board Secretary, Norma Perez, or to me, and we will provide them to the board. We also ask the members of the audience to be respectful of others, remain quiet during the meeting so that everyone is able to hear the proceedings. For your convenience, microphones have been provided on both sides of the boardroom. Please speak directly into the microphone if you're asked to answer a question or address the board during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, officer. The time is 6:50 PM, and this meeting is hereby called to order. We have the presence of a quorum, and the meeting has been duly called, and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. Please rise for the pledges of allegiance and remain standing for the silent invocation.
I pledge allegiance to thee, flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Please remain standing for the silent invocation. You may be seated. First up are our recognitions, Dr. Dupree.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. This evening, we have a lot of outstanding students and staff to be recognized, and they've been very patient, so if the board would join me in front of the dais, we will get busy shaking hands with students and staff.
President Burdine, Dr. Dupree, members of the board, we've got an outstanding group of students we're going to present to you this evening. First, I would like to introduce some sophomores from Travis High School. Can I please have Mr. Babak Sumal and Michael Fernandez come forward and shake hands with the board? They let us in our pledges of allegiance. Both of these young men are students in the Global Studies Academy, and they were recognized and selected for their outstanding student leadership. Thank you so much. Next, joining us from Elkins High School, we have Anchet Nath. Anchet was recognized at the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Seminar as Outstanding Male Ambassador. This also came with a $1,000 scholarship, and he attended the Congress in Chicago where he furthered his leadership skills. Congratulations. Next, joining us from Holly Elementary, we have Sharina Kakulavalam. She's a fifth grade student there at Holly, and she won first place in the Division Four for the My Driver, My Safety Hero National School Bus Safety Poster Contest. And could we invite Mr. Gus Rodriguez forward, Director of our transport, one of our transportation terminals? He's got a check there. We want to get that in the picture. Sharina, we want to make sure you're in that picture, so you go right up there. We're going to take it. So you hold on to it. Right there, we're going to get your picture. Congratulations. Our beautiful award, too. Good job. Next, I'd like to invite Ms. Karen Powell, a counselor at Mission West Elementary School, and our principal Rhonda Mason. They're being recognized for the CREST Award, which is Counselors Reinforcing Excellence for Students in Texas. Mission West Elementary is the first Fort Bend ISD campus to achieve the CREST Award, so we're very excited and appreciate all the hard work of the team there. Good job, ladies. Next, we have Francesca Joseph, a fifth grade student from Santa Crossing Elementary. Francesca was featured in People Magazine article about being a compassionate citizen. Yes, she led, yeah, let's give her another round of applause. She led a community-wide fundraiser and donation drive to support animal rescue. Good job, Francesca. Next, we have two outstanding students from Clements High School. Can I have Sophie Moreno and Nora Rami come forward? They won the U.S. House of Representatives Congressional APP Challenge. It provides a way for community members to report instances of human trafficking they may have seen or experienced. And U.S. Congressman Pete Olson recognized these young ladies at a ceremony at their school, so congratulations to you both. And now, I will turn it over to Eugene Holcomb, our Assistant Director of Fine Arts.
Good evening, FBI SD Board of Trustees and Dr. Dupree. Mr. Drew, the Director of Fine Arts, received the 2019 Texas Music Administrator of the Year Award for his outstanding leadership of all fine arts programs. J.D. Yanda, past president of the Texas Music Administrators Conference, will present the award to Mr. Drew.
Good evening, President Burdine, Dr. Dupree, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is J.D. Yanda, and I'm the Director of Fine Arts in Tommael, past president of T-Mac, as Mr. Holcomb just talked. Nearly all of the members of T-Mac are district-level administrators over multiple fine arts disciplines, not just music, so a better name for us would really be Texas Fine Arts Administrators. We all have the opportunity to nominate particular administrators who have done significant work in Texas, and also district teachers have the opportunity to do that all across Texas. There were testimony given about Mr. Drew, and I'd like to tell you just a couple of quick things about the, how we all feel about James Drew across Texas. First of all, a couple of comments from Fort Bend ISD teachers. Jim has the best interest of all fine arts disciplines in the district. He has raised the bar so significantly. There was a time when some FBI SD schools had no middle-school choral programs. Jim has brought back choral music at the middle-school level, and programs have flourished under his leadership. Additionally, Mr. Drew has elevated FBI SD fine arts in every way, from equitable funding to consistent staffing. He cares about the quality of our work and the engagement of students above everything else. Jim always tries to make our teaching better based on established pedagogy as well as new and up-to-date strategies. He takes care of every single teacher in the district. I believe he cares just as much about us as he does about Fort Bend ISD students. And finally, I truly enjoy teaching in Fort Bend ISD, and Jim Drew is the biggest reason why. It's my pleasure to recognize Jim with this plaque as the T-Mac Outstanding Administrator for 2019, my friend and my colleague.
The Austin High School Full Symphony Orchestra was chosen to perform at the 2018 Midwest Convention in Chicago, Illinois. The Midwest Clinic is the world's largest band and orchestra directors conference with over 17,000 attendees from all 50 states and more than 30 countries. The group is represented by two of its student members and their directors, Ann Victor and Ryan Demkovich, assisted by Zoran Jasmek.
Ready, one, two. Thank you.
James Neal Elementary School's music club, The Rockin' Longhorns Percussion Ensemble, were selected to perform for the 2019 Texas Music Educators Association Convention. The Rockin' Longhorns is a music club that sings and plays percussion instruments comprised of approximately 48 fourth and fifth-grade students. Neal Elementary School is the first elementary campus in Fort Bend ISD to be invited to perform at the Texas Music Educators Association Convention. The group is represented by several of its student members and their director, Mrs. Stacy Waits. The district is recognizing 37 outstanding student musicians selected this year by competitive audition for the Allstate Band Choir and Orchestra, who performed at the 2019 Texas Music Educators Association Convention. The final selection to Allstate puts these musicians in the top 2% of all students who auditioned from across the state. Please help us recognize and congratulate these talented Allstate musicians and their directors. Earning a place in the Allstate Band from Fort Bend ISD are Jared Dix from Austin High School and his director, Ryan Demkovich. David Kiazon, Kyle Pittman, George Andrews, Larry Juay, Ben Kelly, Yamil Lopez Ruiz, from Clements High School, and their directors, Daniel Galloway, Jeff Johnson, and Brian Waits. Madeline Williamson from Dulles High School and her director, Joe Pruitt. Brandon Benson from Ridge Point High School and his director, Luis Saldana. Anna Brooks from Travis High School and her director, Garrett Tagliabue. Fort Bend ISD students who sang in this year's Allstate Choir are Melinda Nuttelepotti and Keora Stevens from Austin High School. Pari Dewan from Elkins High School and her director, John Richardson. Raymond Papas from Travis High School and his director, Timothy Kilgore. Finally, the district string players that won a spot in the Allstate Orchestra are Derek Jiang, Paul Lee, Elton Tai, Ken Zhao, Deanna Venkatesan, Cameron Ahmed, and Jonathan Chang from Austin High School, and their directors, Ann Victor and Zoran Jasmek. Eric Peng, Archer Wang, Neo Scott, Jonathan Wing, and Randy Tan from Clements High School, and their directors, Ginger Wolf and Neil Springer. Morris Lee, Timothy Fang, Phoebe Tan, and Tommy Yu from Dulles High School and their director, Michael Isador. Reece Bedee, Robert Gonzalez, and Kevin James Julipas from Travis High School and their director, Sabrina Barons.
Let's give all of our amazing musicians another big round of applause. Thank you to our Fine Arts Department for presenting your students to us today. We have one more addition to recognition, so at this time, I'd like to invite Mayor Joe Zimmerman for the City of Sugar Land to come forward and spell, share some great news about FFA with us.
Good evening, distinguished members of the board and Dr. Dupree. I'm here tonight to, on behalf of city council, to recognize the young men and women that you have and future farmers of America, and I have a proclamation I'd like to read. Office of the Mayor, National FFA Week, February 16 through the 23rd of 2019. Whereas students whose lives are impacted by future farmers of America and agricultural education will achieve academic and personal growth, strengthen American agriculture, and provide leadership to build healthy local communities, a strong nation, and a sustainable world. And whereas Fort Bend County celebrates National FFA Week for Fort Bend ISD FFA students and promotes an agricultural education to provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and the future of the food, fiber, and natural resource systems. And whereas the FFA motto, "Learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve," gives direction of purpose to the students who take an active role in succeeding in agricultural education, the FFA promotes citizenship, volunteerism, patriotism, and cooperation. Now therefore, I, Joe R. Zimmerman, on behalf of the members of city council, and by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Sugar Land, Texas, do hereby recognize National FFA Week, February 16 through the 23rd of 2019. And I'm here to tell you, I had a little chance to visit with them out in the hallway, and, and they are just exactly what this proclamation says. They're extraordinary young men and women who are going to achieve great things for Fort Bend County.
Thank you, students. We're going to get a group picture with mayor as well. Parents, we're going to take your picture, and then y'all are welcome to come up and grab one. Students, go ahead and start filling in the front there a little bit when you get a chance. Congratulations. All right, students, thank you so much. Board, if you would, if I could have you stay put for just one second. We are going to try to get a couple more pictures now that we've got a little bit more room in the room. We've got our CREST campus here. They wanted to get a picture with their banner. And we'll let some of the parents also dismiss, and we can get some other audience members in the room. Thank you, and congratulations to you, and we've got one more picture. If you'll remember, she was featured in the People Magazine, so she wanted to get a picture as well. Congratulations, Francesca. And that concludes our recognition.
Officer, are we about good out there? All right. Next, we have audience items. Each audience member signed up will have three minutes to speak. Mr. Rosenthal will keep time, and he'll let you know when you have a 30, when you have 30 seconds remaining. First up is Swatara Alushola. Next, we will have Mr. Reginald Moore, so you can be ready when, when she's finished.
Hello.
Go for it.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Hello again, Mr. Dupree. My name is Swatara Alushola. I was a member of the City of Sugar Land Task Force, put together for the Sugar Land 95, the 95 remains of men, boys, elders found on a site that's owned by Fort Bend ISD, where they are wanting to continue to build Jane Reese Technical Center. I'm also a part of the advisory committee that Fort Bend ISD put together to advise, I guess, Fort Bend ISD's board about how to move forward on certain things. And I know that there is a lot that the community is not aware of that's been occurring. Fort Bend ISD, in my opinion, has not been as transparent as possible with the community as far as their position on this whole project and everything that's happening. It has seemed, in my experience on both committees, that Fort Bend ISD just wishes to rush through the process as much as possible and cloak it in saving taxpayer dollars, but there is no price you can put on a historical find that is as important as this. There is no price you can put on my history. There is no price that you can put on our connection to our ancestors, and they are speaking to us. They did not ask to be uncovered on that ground when you started construction there or continued construction there, and I don't feel like they should be swept under the rug, their legacy as free laborers for Imperial Sugar that literally built this city. which makes it possible for all of us to be sitting here today. I think it would be an atrocity to skate over that. Yes, we had a small victory with the Commissioners voting to join the legal process, but the fact that we have to go through a legal process for basic human decency is an issue for me. And I feel like everyone sitting in this room who was unaware of that should know that. I feel that they should know that you all don't want a court-appointed master and chancery delivering facts back to the judge. Why not? Why don't you want the judge to know the facts of everything that is occurring with the Advisory Committee and information being put forth? Why wouldn't you want a judge to know that? I know you're not allowed to answer questions, but I feel like Fort Ben ISD throughout this entire process has been completely disrespectful. I feel like it's all about the money. You always bring up the eighteen million dollars with the restructuring of the building and the architecture, and there is no price you can put on my history. I don't care how long it takes, give these men names. Don't build a memorial with just inmate number one, inmate number two. We need to know who they are. We need to find their families. We need to bring their families in on this process.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, Mr. Reginald Moore. Please hold your applause. After Mr. Reginald Moore will be-
I wanna thank Fort Ben Independent School District for the desire to cooperate with the county Commissioners in an effort that has long term consequences for the interpretation of Texas history. Thank you. Over the past year, both local and national media has been focused on the Sugar Land Ninety-Five, hoping for some agreement as to the memorialization of these ninety-five souls. Last week, we witnessed a victory when the Fort Ben County Commissioners came to an agreement to approach a settlement with Fort Ben Independent School District with an offer to purchase a cemetery. An agreement of this kind would represent a desire to do the right thing. The potential results of this cooperation is huge. It represents working together in partnership with and will help to heal our local community, as well as signal to the nation that the City of Sugar Land and Fort Ben Independent School District is on board with the type of change that signals reconciliation and collaboration. All of us at the Convict Leasing and Labor Project are proud to be a part of this change of heart, this desire to work together. Representative Ron Reynolds, who represents the Fort Ben County, is sponsoring the following bills, which may serve our interests. HCR fifty-one, HCR fifty-five, HR two-seventeen. HCR fifty-one is filed on February the fourth, twenty nineteen, creating a joint, caption, creating a joint interim committed to study the legacy of convict leasing in Texas. HR fifty-five filed February the sixth, directing the State Preservation Board to initiate steps to provide for the replacement of the Children of the Confederacy plaque with to honor victims of the state's convict leasing system. HR two-seventeen filed February the fifth, twenty nineteen, honoring the Convict Leasing and Labor Project for its contributions. And Representative Ron Wilson also has filed and authored a bill to allow the Texas Historical Commission to do DNA testing to possibly identify the ninety-five bodies. We wanna thank you guys for your cooperation and take this in consideration. The nation is following us. The world is watching this, so it'll be a big benefit for hopefully all these things to come about in this collaborative, and we'd like to see how all these arrangements come about, and hopefully we can get this done quickly, and it won't be any interference, because we wanna make sure that everybody's on the right side of justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next, Naomi Carrier. After Mrs. Carrier will be Cynthia Ginyard.
My time hasn't started yet.
No, ma'am.
I am Naomi Carrier. I am an educator of forty years. I wanna thank the FBI ISD Board of Directors for accepting my request here. The Convict Leasing and Labor Project would like to applaud Fort Ben ISD for its willingness to work with Fort Ben County Commissioners to properly memorialize and honor the Sugar Land Ninety-Five. While we have been at odds in the past, we have always wanted to collaborate with the district. Recent developments are presenting us with new opportunities for unprecedented collaborations. In the spirit of this new partnership, we request Fort Ben ISD to stop all legal proceedings regarding removing the remains. The Convict Leasing and Labor Project's long-term plan is the creation of an interpretive center for education and reconciliation, in view of which we have the following request. One, we would like Fort Ben ISD to consider negotiating the conveyance of an additional five acres of land for this interpretive center, surrounded by a memorial park, whose usage may be a collaboration between the county, the city, and the district. Two, what are your plans for the artifacts? CLIP would like to be one of the organizations that has custody of artifacts for our interpretive center, since we are in the process of becoming a certified repository. Three, recent decisions by the Fort Ben County Commissioners offer a great opportunity for Fort Ben ISD to partner with CLIP, whose professional team has the expertise to network relationships with the Smithsonian's National Museum for African-American History and Culture and the National Park Service Teaching with Historic Sites Program. Our real partnership begins with healing our local relationships and beginning to establish opportunities for collaborative planning. CLIP is prepared to be a key partner in any and all future planning. We envision the entire historic site as not only attracting national attention, but stimulating heritage tourism for the state of Texas, the county, the city of Sugar Land, wherein schools may bring their students for field trips. This is indicative of the Convict Leasing and Labor Project's plans for programming in its interpretive center for education and reconciliation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, Mrs. Ginyard.
Good evening. I come to congratulate and appreciatively applaud you, school board members, Dr. Dupree, for moving in the right direction. We realize that getting to this point was not easy. And tough decisions are not always easy, and they're not always comfortable. So I want to pat you on the back for that. However, you're probably more aware than I am that there are still a ways to go. There are still decisions to be made. There are still goals to achieve, and I stand to encourage you to continue that, to remember that everything we do in a school district, it's not about you, and it's not about me as an elected official. It's about our children. Everything. And we want to remember, we want to preserve, we want to honor the land, the bodies, the remains that are there. The latest news has been good news, but there's a whole lot of finagling to be done as you move forward, as a school district, as the county works with you, and that is why I'm here today. Thank you for being sensitive to the issue as a society, and thank you for demonstrating to our students and our community who we are as a people and what we should be doing, especially when these uncomfortable situations come along. It's easy when it's not uncomfortable, but when it gets uncomfortable, it's tough, and we have to do the right things. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Up next is Congressman Al Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that my friends who are seated here with me be allowed to stand with me. I saw the mayor take a point of personal privilege earlier and asked their teachers to come up. So would you kindly stand with me, please, the elected officials? We have Mr. DeMurchant, County Commissioner, KP George, the Honorable KP George, County Judge, Honorable Ron Reynolds, State Representative, Mr. Middleton, District Attorney, Brian, and you've already had Ms. Ginyard introduced. I'm here tonight because I love my country. I love what it stands for. I love the noble ideals. This country means something to me. I love the notion of liberty and justice for all. And I'm here tonight because I want to help us bend the arc of the moral universe that Dr. King talked about toward justice. An injustice has been perpetrated, but we have an opportunity to right a wrong. It's not about black or white. It's really about wrong and right. This is an opportunity for us to show the world that we will respect the remains of people regardless as to who they are, regardless as to what their station in life was, regardless as to where they are found. We're gonna respect them, and we're gonna treat them with dignity and respect. This is what a great country does. Ours is a great country. I love my country. So I'm here to make an appeal to everyone. Let's work together to reach an amiable, amicable resolution and bring justice to this circumstance. Finally, this. It was a historic occasion when all of us met. Senator Miles has a representative here as well. This was historic. The District Attorney, State Representative, County Judge, County Commissioner, U.S. Congressperson. It was historic. But it's not enough to have a historic meeting. We have to have a historic result. And this is our opportunity. Each one of us, at some point on the infinite continuum that we call time, we will all have to account for our time. And on that day, the question won't be, how many rich people did you feed? How many full bellies did you take care of? The question is gonna be, what did you do for the least, the last, and the lost? We now have an opportunity. Let us not waste it, my dear brothers and sisters. There's but one race. That's the human race, and we're all a part of it. Let's make a positive difference and do justice by the Sugar Land Ninety-Five. I love you and I thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. Up next is Melanie Embarchi. Is Melanie available? Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
Good evening. As you may recall, last June, the Board of Trustees voted to balance, to review the annual enrollment in February and make a determination on balancing enrollment between First Colony and Fort Settlement. I'm here to request that you balance enrollment between these two good middle schools for the fall of two thousand nineteen. Policy states the purpose of the annual enrollment review is to operate as many schools as possible at the desired capacity in order to allow each school to function effectively without straining core facilities and other school resources, and to prevent schools from becoming overcrowded or underutilized, so that to the greatest extent practical, an equitable school system is maintained, and equitable educational opportunities are available for students throughout the district. The principal at Fort Settlement expects between sixteen hundred and seventeen hundred students next year. He's always been a much more accurate with his projections than the demographer from out of state. He said with the current enrollment of fifteen fifty, the building is fully utilized, and portables would be needed to accommodate the expected additional students next fall. Baines is the same building, and when it went over fifteen fifty, they needed portables. Last year, Mrs. Tassan noted that when Baines was at sixteen hundred, it stressed the facility and it stressed the teachers. I have no doubt this stressed the students as well. We've been told by Dr. Dupree that instead of bringing in portables, Fort Settlement will be capped, and admin will find creative ways to fit more students inside the building. CWE has been capped repeatedly for many years, stressing the facility, teachers, and students. Now those stressed students will go to Fort Settlement and be capped as well. So the proposed solution is to cap both Commonwealth and Fort Settlement. But Fort Settlement does not have to be capped. Fort Settlement is projected at sixteen hundred to seventeen hundred, but First Colony is projected at about a thousand, roughly six hundred students less. First Colony also has three hundred to four hundred empty seats and is significantly below the eighty percent utilization, roughly seventy percent. I urge you to balance enrollment between these two good middle schools for the fall of two thousand nineteen. Balancing enrollment now and then rezoning for the new elementary school simply does not have the same effects as rezoning a particular student twice. Balancing middle school now keeps cohorts together as they transition to middle school and provides equitable learning opportunities for the most students practical, provides equitable access to mental health counselors, and the best learning environment for continuous improvement for all students. It is the best utilization of resources, reducing strain on facilities and other resources. It is fiscally responsible use of M and O money. It is proactive. It balances diversity, follows paid consultants and community recommendations from two thousand fourteen and eighteen, and helps rectify past mistakes of overlooking growth at Commonwealth and not rezoning First Colony, Fort Settlement when Thornton opened. Plus, it follows Fort Ben policy. Please remember, this isn't about numbers. It isn't about how many we can fit inside the building. We're not talking about widgets. These are students. And we're talking about balance and equitable learning opportunities. That's the purpose of the annual enrollment review.
Thank you very much. Next is Ravi Gumati. Following Mr. Gumati is Therese Hanon.
I'd like to thank the Honorable Board Members and Mrs. Suprenant. Thank you for the opportunity for me to discuss the I'm here to discuss the fact that in today's agenda, Fort Settlement Middle School, the rebalancing of between Fort Settlement Middle School and First Colony Middle School wasn't even an item. During last year's meeting, when we were discussing PASA two thousand eighteen study, it was concluded that there was a need for rebalancing between the two schools, and it would be done in early two thousand nineteen, so I was really surprised to see that it wasn't part of today's agenda. And I would like to just point out that the need for balancing between First Colony Middle School and Fort Settlement Middle School was first brought up in two thousand fourteen and again in two thousand eighteen, and we haven't still addressed that issue. And due to that fact, and I would like to stress that the need to rebalance is now, and it's quite urgent. The enrollment in Fort Settlement Middle School for two thousand seventeen was one thousand four hundred twenty-seven. Two thousand eighteen, it is fifteen hundred fifty-one. And by going with that, we can guess the two thousand number, two thousand nineteen number close to anywhere seventeen hundred. And according to Mr. Principal of the school, Mr. Hegisek, he mentioned in PTA meeting that there would be a need for bringing in trailers, portables, to accommodate the students coming in fall of two thousand nineteen. They were also like planning for additional lunch hour, additional staff. It's like all this while we have utilization in First Colony at or below seventy percent. To put it in context, I would like to bring the example of Baines Middle School. At its peak enrollment, the strength was eighteen, eighteen hundred fifty-four, of which only fifteen hundred fifty students were in the building. Rest three hundred and fifty students were in the portables. And with the current enrollment, the two thousand eighteen enrollment for Fort Settlement Middle School, we are already beyond fifteen hundred fifty. So without portables, I don't think we can fit any more students in Fort Settlement Middle School. And lastly, I don't think we need to point out an overcrowded environment is-
Thirty seconds.
Creates a stressful environment for everybody, including students, teachers, and everybody. And I would request the Board to consider, please consider rebalancing between First Colony and Fort Settlement Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next. Alright.
Hi.
Thank you.
My name is Therese Hanhan, and I'm a mother of children at Commonwealth Elementary and Fort Settlement Middle School. It's nice to see all of you. I know I've emailed all of you a lot of times, but I've never spoken. So forgive me if I'm nervous. I am totally nervous. It's not fun to speak, but I, and I know you can't answer me, but I will be asking some questions. My emails to you have been about safety in the portable buildings at Commonwealth. At a neighborhood meeting in October, I asked you directly, Dr. Dupree, if we could have a dedicated police officer at Commonwealth. Chief Ryder had announced that thirteen police officers would be hired for the school- Chief Ryder had announced that thirteen police officers would be hired for the school district. I asked you at a meeting in Avalon if maybe we could have one dedicated to the most crowded elementary campus. You said you would look into it. Do we have a dedicated officer? We'd like to know. Also, I've asked many questions about access to the bathrooms. I know it may seem silly to talk about toilets, but it is such a basic need for students to have clean bathrooms, not a crazy walk in the rain without a covered walkway as they have at Commonwealth Elementary. I don't understand why this happened, and I would like to know if at a minimum, we could have another janitor hired, maybe to help with the cleanliness of our restrooms. It is absolutely necessary, and I don't understand why it can't be done. I would also beg you to consider the current and expected enrollment at Fort Settlement as you've heard. So I know you know this, I have to emphasize, the stress on a school's facilities when it's overcrowded is really horrible. It stresses the staff, the students, and really, it's not worth it. And at the end of the day, the safety of our children is of utmost importance. So I really appreciate you always getting back to me by email. A lot of you have been wonderful about that, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Lisa Shank. Then after, after Mrs. Shank speaks, it'll be Rachel Adcock. Sorry for butchering your name.
Oh, no, you got it right. I was shocked.
All right.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to let me speak. I have a sophomore at Travis High School. He's in the marching band program, and he has been without a band director since January We have received zero communication until five o'clock today about him even being gone. I sent three emails before. I had a conference phone call with Ms. Diaz and Ms. Herring, and all I asked for was an email to be sent out to let the parents just make a statement, let the parents know that he is not in the classroom. I was told that that could not be done, they could not say anything, they couldn't even acknowledge that he wasn't at the school. I find that so utterly ridiculous. The parents and the students deserve information. We don't, we are not asking for any kind of gossip. We don't want to know what, why he's not at school, although we all want him back, but all we wanted was acknowledgement. That's it. There has not been any kind of information until five o'clock today. This email that was sent before this meeting, there was not any kind of information about who was taking his place, and quite frankly, you can't take Mr. Jaime's place. You can't step in as, and fill a band director's shoes. You just can't. He has the rapport with the students, he has their respect, and we have a trip to California coming up on March seventh, cost a whole lot of money. The parents that are, kids are going, we agreed to it based on his leadership, on him going. I was told that Ms. Herring was stepping in, not stepping in, that she was going also. My problem is that the chaperones that are going, that's great.
Thirty seconds.
I appreciate that, but Ms. Herring doesn't have the rapport with the students. She doesn't know every student, and that is really important to entrust your child going all the way to California on this trip. That's going to be an amazing opportunity for them, but as I said, we don't feel like he can be replaced. We want Mr. Jaime back in the classroom with our students. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, Mrs. Rachel Adcock. Please hold your applause. Thank you.
Mr. Moore's here.
Yes, ma'am. Officer will help you here.
Thanks. Hi, my name is Rachel Adcock. I have a seventeen-year-old trumpet player who is in the Travis Band. I very much appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. I very much do, and I wanted to speak on behalf of Mr. Jaime, who I've known for the past two and a half years in his capacity as the Director of the Travis Tiger Band. In that time, I've witnessed his passion for the program, his dedication to the students, his ability to inspire the students to be great, as only exceptional teachers can do. After my son's first year in the band, I agreed to sit on the Executive Board of the Booster Club, not because I'm a helicopter parent, and certainly not because I enjoy committee work, but because I wanted to be a part, a bigger part of the fantastic program that Mr. Jaime has built at Travis High School, and specifically to work with Mr. Jaime, because I find his leadership style to be collaborative, respectful, and effective. He communicates directly and has helped the Board set high and attainable goals, and he does it with a smile on his face. So according to student reports, Mr. Jaime was removed from Travis High School on January thirty-first and has not been back. After ten days, Principal Julie Diaz explained to me that his absence was due to personal reasons. Until, as Mrs. Shank explained, until about an hour before this meeting, we had received no official communication from the school. And in fact, I appreciate all of y'all's willingness to at least read the emails that were going out today, and it was because of all that, I really think, that that email did come out at five o'clock this afternoon. But of course, we still don't have status of his leave or timeframe for resolution or any indication of the nature of the absence. So the band has been without a director since the end of last month, and while the assistant directors are doing what they can to fill in the gaps, there have been rehearsal cancellations and a postponement of the solo festival. So it's hurting the kids, right? And that's before we even examine the blow to the morale that Mr. Jaime's unexplained absence has had on the band members. As Mrs. Shank explained too, we have this out-of-state trip that's scheduled for next month, and it's, that's in jeopardy now. And I say jeopardy because a number of us parents are extremely unhappy that we have paid seventeen hundred dollars per student. There's over ninety kids going, so much money. And that trip was being billed as led by the band director, and now it's going to be led by the...
Thirty seconds.
Yeah, by the brand-new assistant director and a school administrator who's unknown to lots of the kids and most of the parents. So problematic situation for the parents who made a significant financial commitment to a trip that no longer exists as billed. So my questions for you as the Board is, what is the district planning to do at this point to support the band students and the program going forward? And how can you assure us that a fair process is in place to examine the nature of these personal reasons for Mr. Jaime's absence? Is there an investigation? Are the appropriate parties being interviewed?
Thank you, ma'am.
Process, dish. Thank you.
Appreciate you. Next is Jennifer McCarrill. Please hold your applause. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for listening to us. I have a sophomore at Travis High School in the band as well, and I'm just piggybacking on what they said. My main concern is, is I don't like my student coming home and telling me the numerous emails every single day of what's going on with Mr. Jaime, or why he's not there, or when he's coming back, or if he's been fired today, or he's... There's just way too many rumors, and I feel like it's dividing our band, and so my question, I guess to the ministered, is when are they going to pull the band together and explain the plan of action and what's going to take place, and who's going to lead them, and just bring us all back together? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Next, Mr. Jerry Monroe. And then after Mr. Monroe is Anson Sabrino.
I saw you do a lot of recognitions. I won't scream tonight, but I could have swore it was Black History Month. Did we forget that or something? I guess, I don't know. Well, since the last time I saw you, had four-point-eight million people watching me stand in your boardroom, and I'll see if I can double that tonight. Maybe I wouldn't have if you would have acknowledged Black History Month, but we tend not to acknowledge Black History Month in Fort Ben as well as HISD, because in all actuality, you don't teach black history. Did we forget to do that too? I don't need to know about Rosa Parks, I need to know who was on the bus before Rosa. I need to know why Thurgood Marshall even filed a brief.